Okay, so we are back in the second session and no action was taken. Okay, up next on our agenda, we have Acting City Manager as a mission. Considered as a mayor Elizabeth Alba as Acting City Manager at an annual salary of one hundred twenty-two thousand, effective August sixteenth, twenty twenty-one pending the completion of an agreement for interim city manager services for possible action on August twenty-third, twenty twenty-one. Mr. Casey?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I'm pleased to be presenting, uh, you know, basically our succession and transition plan here for the evening. I'm stepping down effective August fifteenth. Previously, council expressed an interest in, uh, working with Finance Director Alba to set the terms of an agreement for her to, uh, follow after as interim city manager. Uh, that process has begun. Council designated a subcommittee of Council of Mayor Guerrero, Deputy Mayor Burisma, and Counselor Farmer to work out the details of a proposal, uh, and then directed that that be sent to the city attorney where it is currently under review. As part of that proposal, uh, there's a proposed salary of one hundred and twenty-two thousand annually. They anticipate getting the final, uh, review back and finalizing it with Director Alba between now and the council's next meeting on August twenty-third. This is kind of a housekeeping measure to provide continuity and leadership between my departure and your August twenty-third meeting. And, uh, we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Casey, and we'll go on with the conference meeting. Questions or comments, Mr. Mayor?
Uh, no questions, Mr. Mayor. Uh, one comment. I, I, this is a housekeeping measure, something we need to do because the manager's not going to be in place. I see no reason why we, we can't move forward with this with, uh, without objection, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Uh, Counselor Buhner?
Questions or comments?
Counselor Hicks?
No questions or comments.
Counselor Farmer?
No questions or comments.
Counselor Hart?
Um, I agree with Mr. Ristucci that we should be able to smooth right ahead with that and make it so.
Deputy Mayor Burisma?
Obviously, I was in on the meeting. I have no questions or comments at this point other than let's move forward with this.
Thank you. All right, so I don't have any additional questions or comments. That's when we get the document back, our attorney. But, you know, we will go ahead and, uh, review this with, uh, Ms. Alba and, uh, then bring it back to council for final, uh, approval. Hopefully, we'll get this all completed by our, um, August twenty-third. Hopefully, nothing, um, is in the way, but we should be, we still have a few, probably days in there now, so.
Um, Mr. Mayor, the recommendation here is to move to designate Elizabeth Alba as Acting City Manager, effective on August sixteenth, um, pending the completion.
Correct. So, Mr. Casey's last day is going to be the fifteenth, I believe?
That's correct.
The fifteenth?
My last day is the fifteenth, yes.
Fifteenth, and then probably with the camaraderie the sixteenth. Uh, but now the acting city manager, Mr. Casey, is going to be out the next few days, so she'll be the heading or the managing manager. And obviously, once continued after the fifteenth, fifteenth will be effective as acting manager. Once we get the agreement done, then it'll be the interim city manager, which we're talking about.
Okay, on the twenty-third.
Once we get that document finalized and reviewed by Ms. Alba as well in the committee, then we'll be moving that way.
Unless she decides to back out on this, which I think she's going to do.
Mr. Mayor, I, I would also like the council as a whole to review the document before.
How come it's not going to be for Ms. Alba?
I would say before, in case they, in case they have a, a change that they would like to make.
Sure, good to know.
Do you mean like bumping up her salary?
Pardon?
Like bumping up her salary? I'm just kidding. Not really, but kind of.
All right, so we can all myself, make a lot of mental charge against the council before Ms. Alba is actually reviewing it. And these are the changes, just to kind of tie my hat to our time, so we may not see them on August twenty-third, but we'll try, we'll squeeze everything in the next few days. What is our counsel desire?
Move ahead. I'd make the motion to move ahead with the designation and, uh, the annual salary of one hundred and twenty-two thousand, effective August sixteenth, nineteen, uh, twenty twenty-one. Uh, pending the completion of the agreement for interim city manager services for possible action on our August twenty-third, twenty twenty-one meeting.
May I have a second?
I'll second that.
A motion by Counselor Hart, second by Counselor Buhner, to designate Elizabeth Alba as Acting City Manager at an annual salary of one hundred twenty-two thousand, effective August sixteen, twenty twenty-one. Pending the completion of an agreement for interim city manager services for possible action on August twenty-third, twenty twenty-one. Is there any debate on this item? Deputy Mayor DeBake, can we give a roll call, please?
Mayor Guerrero?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Burisma?
Yes.
Counselor Ristucci?
Yes.
Counselor Buhner?
Yes.
Counselor Hicks?
Yes.
Counselor Farmer?
Yes.
Counselor Hart?
Yes.
Mayor, your seven yes votes.
Thank you. Motion passes. Up next, we have our G E N G A P Triton, Triton, Triton. L O P Professional Services Agreement, Amendment Number Two. Consider authorizing city manager to sign agreement, sign amendment number two with A P Triton, L O P. Let's see, manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is also in the nature of a housekeeping matter. The city, uh, fire department contracts for ambulance billing services with, uh, a set of vendors. Uh, one of the providers in that process is A P Triton, and they've requested, uh, an amendment, uh, essentially just to two, uh, minor provisions. One is to update the and extend the effective date of the current agreement as is, uh, through June of twenty twenty-two. And the second is to update the section containing their contact information. There's no change to the provisions or rates or fees, and, uh, staff recommend, uh, moving forward.
All right, so, um, we're going to listen to these any questions or comments, and we'll start with Counselor Buhner.
No questions or comments.
Okay, Counselor Hicks?
No questions or comments.
Counselor Farmer?
No questions.
Counselor Hart?
No questions.
Deputy Mayor Burisma?
I have no questions, sir.
Counselor Ristucci?
No questions, Mr. Mayor.
I have any questions either. So what is our counsel desire desire?
I'll go with your group.
Second, this is Counselor Ristucci.
A motion by Counselor Hicks, second by Counselor Ristucci to authorize city manager to sign amendment number two with A P Triton, L O P. Is there any debate on this item? Deputy Mayor DeBake, can we give a roll call, please?
Counselor Hart?
Yes.
Counselor Farmer?
Yes.
Counselor Hicks?
Yes.
Counselor Buhner?
Yeah.
Counselor Ristucci?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Burisma?
Yes.
Mayor Guerrero?
Yes.
I'm going to make a second vote. Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you. Up next, we have, uh, T A B, London, Franklin Court Water Main Improvement. Consider approving and resolution of approving tax order twenty twenty-one dash oh five and authorize city manager to enter into an agreement with H L A Engineering to design the Franklin Court Water Main in the amount of thirty-six thousand, three hundred dollars. Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. This item is, uh, arising out of our Public Works Department. Last year, or I think either last year or early this year, uh, city staff became aware of some complaints around water pressure issues in the Franklin Court, uh, neighborhood, as well as there, I believe, have been a request for an additional hookup in that neighborhood. What staff discovered, uh, is that historically, the neighborhood was served by simply a two-inch PVC water main. And for visual reference, uh, since it's handy, um, for those of you who can see me on the video, the challenge coin here, uh, the mayor's coin, uh, is larger in diameter than the water main serving all of those residents on Franklin Court. And as a result, it, uh, uh, gives them, you know, less than ideal water flows. It also could be a safety issue, uh, uh, for fire safety. The staff are looking at, uh, upgrading that to what is more our standard, uh, sizing for neighborhoods of that type, uh, which would be an eight-inch, uh, water line. Uh, this task order is just for the design process for that work. With current pricing volatility in the market, we're hoping things will stabilize in the next year. So the idea is to do the design, uh, get that ready to go, and then when market conditions are favorable, go out to bid and then come back to council sometime in the future for award of the contract for construction. With that, I, or Public Works Director Fisher, would be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Uh, we'll start with Counselor Hicks. Questions or comments?
No questions.
Counselor Farmer?
No questions.
Counselor Hart?
Well, since I live in that area, maybe I should refuse myself on that. Otherwise, I would say that I'm very excited that we will no longer have blank Franklin out in front of my house whenever it actually rains. Because that has been the, the problem with, uh, the walk, the stormwater moving away as well as water pressure. So this is very exciting that, that the neighbors there will have some relief from that. Seriously, it turns into a lake out there. So that's my thought on that.
Mr. Mayor, if I, if I may, and, uh, Director Fisher, if you can help clarify for me, will this project have any impact on stormwater management, or is this just, uh, domestic drinking water line?
This is just domestic drinking water. Um, in order to resolve the, the issue with puddling in that area, we would have to remove the curves and gutters and, and, and partial sidewalks and install storm system in order to get that, that portion of Franklin Court, that little corner that she's referring to, um, to drain properly.
So I just wanted to make sure we were, uh, clear on the scope.
Okay, fine.
Thank you.
Maybe we can do that later.
Deputy Mayor Burisma, question comes from this item?
No questions, sir, just a comment. This looks like something that's been necessary for a long time. Let's move forward with this.
Counselor Ristucci?
Agree wholeheartedly with the deputy mayor, Mr., Mr. Mayor. Let's move forward on this.
Counselor Buhner?
No questions or comments.
You don't have any questions either. Uh, since the comment two inches seems seriously undersized, so I'm glad we're moving to a higher, uh, pipe to give more water pressure to those of that neighborhood, so. Before we get to getting then, um, where is our counsel desire?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the resolution, uh, approving the task force order, uh, twenty twenty-one oh five, authorizing city manager enter into an agreement with H L, uh, H L A Engineering to design the Franklin Court water main in the amount of thirty-six thousand, three hundred dollars.
I'll second that, sir. This is Deputy Mayor Burisma.
A motion by Counselor Hart, second by Deputy Mayor Burisma to approve resolution approving task order twenty twenty-one dash oh five and authorize city manager to enter into an agreement with H L A Engineering to design the Franklin Court Water Main in the amount of thirty-six thousand, three hundred. Is there any debate on this item? Deputy Mayor DeBake, can we give a roll call, please?
Mayor Guerrero?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Burisma?
Yes.
Counselor Ristucci?
Yes.
Counselor Buhner?
Yes.
Counselor Hicks?
Yes.
Counselor Farmer?
Yes.
Counselor Hart?
Yes.
Mayor, your seven yes votes.
Thank you. Motion passes. Okay, up next, we have our T A B grant application, South Sixth Street Project. Consider approving a resolution authorizing city manager to submit a T A B grant application with urban arterial program and a T A B grant application with the urban sidewalk program to offset F T P funding match requirements for the South Sixth Street Project. Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council is aware, and I know the community is aware, that for a number of years now, we've had a, a plan and a, or a, a project on the plans for, uh, upgrades and improvements to Sixth Avenue between, uh, Decatur and North, uh, kind of the, the, the main, uh, corridor, uh, bringing, uh, residents and commercial activity as well as, uh, tourists, uh, off of Y V H and into our downtown core. And so continuing the improvements along this corridor is, is, is long been desired. Unfortunately, state funding opportunities, uh, kind of dried up on us in the, uh, mid-twenty teens, and so we've been delayed in, in moving forward with it, even though we did get initial approval for design back in twenty thirteen. Fortunately, now, uh, those processes are, are flowing again, and we are finishing the design process, and we've learned of an opportunity to potentially, uh, cover an additional, uh, significant portion of the city's, uh, funding obligation for a project of this type. And we actually have two opportunities. Now, we'll only be able to, if, if successful, uh, take advantage of one of them. But it may be worth, uh, and staffs recommending we go ahead and apply for both funding opportunities, uh, to improve our chances of at least getting one of them. One is through the Transportation Improvement Board, uh, which has, uh, suggested that they have a program that could offset, uh, the city's match by about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, um, through their, uh, work. So that's the first opportunity we are recommending we apply for is the grant through the T I B. But they also, that's for the road improvements, but they also have a grant for sidewalks, uh, which are part of this project, which is a different program, um, which would potentially generate about three hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars, uh, almost three hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars. Either option, if successful, would leave the city with, uh, in the position of only having to pay about a hundred and, uh, fifty to a hundred and seventy thousand dollars in order to accomplish three point five million dollars in street improvements on the Sixth Avenue corridor. Uh, excuse me, Sixth Street corridor. So an incredible return on investment, um, and, uh, an advantage for the city to be able to kind of move forward with this, we're hoping in, in the next year or two. Um, it is a little complicated because we're talking about kind of two grant applications simultaneously. We'll only be able to, uh, if we get one of them, we're not able to get the both. We can't get them both, but, um, if we get either, then, uh, that covers a significant portion of the, uh, money that we would have to normally come up with on our own. Um, with that, I'm gonna ask Director Fisher if he's, if I've covered that complexity adequately, uh, or if there's anything he'd like to add before we go to questions.
No, that was, that was a great description. Um, just real quick, I'll, I'll just add to it. So if we, if we, if we're successful in the three hundred and fifty thousand, that leaves about a hundred and twenty thousand dollar, um, left, which is what's left over. That's the delta on our match. Our match is four hundred and seventy thousand. So that's a significant, uh, um, you know, decrease in that match requirement. If we get the sidewalk grant, that leaves about, about a hundred and forty-three, a hundred and forty-four thousand left, which would be paid out of the, out of the T B D funds, um, that, that we set up last year. So it's a great project, um, including the design work on it. That's where I wrote it here that basically, you know, for less than two hundred thousand dollars, um, I think the design was about fifty-five thousand. So for less than two hundred thousand, we're getting a three point five million dollar project. It has been a long time coming, but, um, but definitely worth our efforts to, uh, to apply for these grants.
Thank you, and we'll start with, um, Counselor Farmer's or questions or comments on this event?
Great project, long time passed due.
Counselor Hart?
I agree with, uh, Councilman Farmer. That'll make that entrance there quite beautiful, I think.
Deputy Mayor Burisma?
I agree with my colleagues, sir. I think this is gonna be a great improvement to that area. Let's, let's go for it.
Counselor Ristucci?
Same comments, Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Buhner?
No questions.
Counselor Hicks?
I'm agreeing with all my peers.
Thank you, and, um, something, a question break, forgot what to ask, but I did see both of them. One of them had a sidewalk only from Decatur to, uh, Highway twelve, but the other one had a, um, the other one had the both sides of the map in red. What was the other map that we were asking for, Mr. Casey? Uh, it's, I think we're, I think we're both.
It, it, uh, Mr. Mayor, Jackie's put up a, a map on the screen. Is that the map you're referring to?
Yeah, the one has a broken up grid online, but I think that's what the sidewalk toward our passing for now. Section of it. But this one is for, this is construction now, K A B, um, systems.
Uh, Director Fisher, can you speak to, uh, based on this map, is this the map that's associated, this is the map associated with the T I B request, right? So this would be, uh, the street improvements. Is that correct?
Yes, let me scroll to it here real quick to make sure I gave Jackie the correct map. Um, yes, yep, this is the, this is the, so the, the areas in red are the areas we're talking about. The areas in black are the areas that have already been done. If that answers his question.
Yeah, and the one, okay, my question was more of the, the funding, um, the, the matching funds that we were having questioned in K A B is that? So this one is coming up, this one is sidewalk.
Oh, okay. So Director Fisher, Jackie's advanced to the sidewalk program. The sidewalk program only covers the portion from Decatur to Yakima Valley Highway. Um, it does not include the section north to North Street. Is that correct? It's a smaller scope?
Yes, and that's because the sidewalks in that north area, that leg between North Avenue and Y V H already has sidewalk, and there's no more right of way to improve that, and it's in good shape, so we're not touching that sidewalk, only the roadway in that area.
Great, that, that made sense. Thank you for the clarification.
Yep.
All right, what is our counsel desire?
I'll second.
I'll second.
A motion by Counselor Hicks, second by Counselor Hart to approve resolution authorizing city manager to submitting T A B grant application for the urban arterial, arterial program and a T A B grant, excuse me, grant application for the urban sidewalk program to offset F T P funding match requirements for the South Sixth Street Project. We have any debate on this item? Well, I see, searchable first, no. I'm trying to plug here, so. First, we'll add for debate, we'll do the role of every judge. Okay, sorry, thank you for, for bearing me. First, we'll do, uh, uh, the debate, and do any debate on this item? Thank you. No debate, uh, can we give a roll call, please?
Mayor Guerrero?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Burisma?
Yes.
Counselor Ristucci?
Yes.
Counselor Buhner?
Yes.
Counselor Hicks?
Yes.
Counselor Farmer?
Yes.
Counselor Hart?
Yes.
Mayor, your seven yes votes.
Thank you. Motion passes. Up next, we have our lodging tax advisory committee recommendations. Consider authorizing expenditures by American Legion Post seventy-three of seventeen thousand dollars and by Yakima Valley Tourism of ten thousand dollars in the twenty twenty-one lodging tax. Uh, Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Uh, council is aware of the lodging tax, uh, mechanism and the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee, which makes recommendations to council on expenditures to promote tourism, uh, based on revenues collected from the hotels and motels, uh, here in the area. This request arises out of, uh, frankly, uh, some very unfortunate effects of the COVID-nineteen pandemic on two of the, um, entities that were awarded funds by LTAC and then by, or, excuse me, recommended by LTAC and then awarded by council in twenty twenty. Uh, but then through circumstances beyond the control of both entities, uh, they were not able to complete, uh, the, the, uh, delivery or invoicing for those funds in twenty twenty. As a result, the funds remained unexpended in the LTAC account. They're still there today, but because of current, uh, law, uh, statutory requirements, um, it'll require a new authorization for expenditures to occur in the twenty twenty-one, uh, budget. The first of these is the, uh, request from the American Legion Post. Last year, they were awarded seventeen thousand in funds, uh, to place orders for and take delivery of additional granite slabs as part of the Jerry Taylor Veterans Memorial Plaza. Uh, after receiving approval from council to proceed, uh, they placed the order, and then global supply chain disruptions due to COVID-nineteen prevented, uh, their suppliers from making delivery in twenty twenty. Uh, they did not actually receive the slabs until May of this year. As a result, they don't have the expenditure authority any longer, uh, to do that, um, and, and, and pay the, essentially pay the invoice that they incurred in good faith based on, 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 on the city's previous action. Likewise, Yakima Valley Tourism had been awarded funding last year for use of tourism dollars, uh, lodging tax funds for tourism activities. They too cut back on some of their activities because of the pandemic. However, their final invoice did not come across until after we had closed out twenty twenty accounts. And so we are requesting payment for the expenses they did occur, uh, in twenty twenty-one funding. LTAC met recently and unanimously, uh, voted to recommend, uh, council kind of reapproved these expenditures out of twenty twenty-one, uh, budget authority. And, you know, it's essentially the same money that's, uh, in the LTAC fund that was there last year for this.
Thank you, Mr. City for that, and, and we'll start with Counselor Hart. Questions or comments?
No questions.
Deputy Mayor Burisma?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. As, uh, chairman of the LTAC committee, uh, we did meet, and I think it was unanimous. We felt that, um, you know, both of these organizations have done a lot of good for the city of Sunnyside. Um, the American Legion Post went ahead in good foot, in good faith. Nobody knows when these things are gonna happen prior to their happening, and so we felt that it was only fair in their case to, um, renew the funding for this project of considering they had already ordered and the slabs had been installed. As far as tourism goes, it's same thing. Um, it was authorized, but because of the COVID, um, again, un, impossible to predict how that was all gonna play out last year, and so, you know, this is something that doesn't happen very often. We don't, we don't expect to see this again. So, yeah, we're very much in favor of, uh, moving this forward.
Counselor Ristucci?
No questions or comments?
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I just got a, a alert, uh, that the recording has stopped.
Yeah, my computer's freezing, so it's just, I'm in it.
I don't know, my screen's saying that you're not at home. Um, let's check for connection, might be back listening. First, we'll ask until we're connected.
Mr. B, can you hear us on the phone?
I can hear, fine. I just got a, a Zoom alert that said the recording of the meeting had stopped.
I got the same recording, Ja, or same message, Jackie.
Okay, perfect. So if you want to continue with the audio, that's fine. I'm, I'm working on the recording. See how it's rolling with my, my screen here?
All right, we'll continue with Counselor, uh, Buhner. Questions or comments on this item?
No questions or comments.
Counselor Hicks?
Hold on one question. Is the vendor, uh, up, still gonna hold his price, or is it gonna be a higher price now?
No, uh, if you're referring to the, uh, the granite slabs, the, the vendor is honoring the invoice they, uh, sent because the delay was on their end, and, and so it's, it, as I understand it, the, uh, the Legion is just looking for the same seventeen thousand that they had requested last year.
Some question, sir.
Counselor Farmer?
No questions.
I just have a question on the lodging tax, I mean Yakima Valley Tourism. Was that just a bill that would not be allowed to because, uh, they closed the office, maybe, or why didn't there were seen a bill this year?
The bill arrived to here, to the city, because of disruptions in their offices, I understand it, the bill arrived to us later than it normally would. Um, they had incurred the expenses, but, uh, there was quite a lot of extra work involved in, in, uh, processing things, and they had laid off a fair number of their staff, so they were delayed. And as a result, we did not receive the bill until after we had closed twenty twenty.
But we did receive the services from them, which is there to be available.
That's correct.
Okay, maybe that's my question. All right, what is our counsel desire?
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Hart? Uh, I move to authorize the expenditures by the American Legion Post seventy-three of seventeen thousand dollars and by Yakima Valley.
Uh, move to authorize the expenditures by the American Legion Post 73 of $17,000 and by Yakima Valley Tourism of $10,000 in the 2021 lodging tax fund.
I'll second that.
Given the motion by Councilor Hart, second by Councilor Beeler to authorize the expenditures by the American Legion Post 73 of $17,000 and Yakima Valley Highway Tourism of $10,000 in the 2021 lodging tax fund. Is there any debate on this item? Any other debate, we got a roll call, please.
Councilor Sushi?
Yes.
Mayor Gido?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Burisma?
Yes.
Councilor Beeler?
Yes.
Councilor Hitt?
Yes.
Councilor Farmer?
Yes.
Councilor Hart?
Yes.
Mayor, your seven yes votes.
Motion passed, thank you very much. Up next, we have, uh, item A, which is police morgue purchase. Uh, under authorization, city manager to purchase 20 mornings for police vehicles at a cost of $25,542.4 cents. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Uh, also believe we are back live recording. Thank you, Jackie. Um, this item was actually, uh, developed by, uh, Finance Director Alba. Uh, in consultation and coordination with the Police Department, we have in some of our aging police vehicles, uh, older equipment, uh, that facilitate their communication. Um, we have an opportunity to replace those with, uh, modern, uh, wireless modems. Um, we're recommending actually purchasing a total of 20 so that we can swap out both the current fleet, uh, modems, as well as have a few extra for the anticipated purchases of new police vehicles later on. Um, I'll actually invite Director Alba to, uh, elaborate on this one, because this, this, uh, uh, this was kind of, uh, her, uh, uh, her project to, to bring to fruition and, uh, you're going to need, give you some practice.
Thank you, Mr. Casey. Um, so the police modems currently are ones that we, kind of were hand me down from a sheriff's purpose. And we recycle and repurpose as much as we can, so currently our police vehicles, um, once they get booted up, leave their cars running so that they can continue to have the internet. Um, there are places on the hills that they lose connectivity. These modems will, um, restore that for them and offer them much better service. The other item that I wanted to let you know, this vendor recently announced that there is going to be a price increase. He is honoring this price for this quote. He's actually holding these 20 modems and a hat for us today because as soon as they found out the price was going up, there was a run on these modems. So I would greatly appreciate your consideration to have this be approved because, number one, we need to make sure that our officers can be connected in the field with your vehicles. Number two, I would like them to not be required to have their cars running in order for them to have access. And number three, I'd like to give a better price.
Council members, questions or comments? We'll turn over the list and we'll go with Deputy Mayor Burisma.
I have no questions or comments at this time, sir. Thank you.
Councilor Sushi?
No questions or comments this time, Mr. Mayor.
Councilor Beeler?
Are these prices actually installed in the vehicles, or is it just given? Department and they have to.
They'll actually, um, be considered drop in modems, so our IT department will get them. They'll be fully ready to go. Um, this anaconda network is, um, very well known and has actually been a since, um, 1999. I'm not sure if it's into my cover, but, um, very, still drop and drag basically. So our IT department will do the install and it'll, they'll be ready to go.
Councilor Hitt?
No questions.
Councilor Farmer?
No questions.
Councilor Hart?
Well, I certainly think in terms of safety of our officers and also the price situation, I'm, I'm in favor of approving this particular, um, item.
Any other questions or comments? Uh, looking forward to the decree and, I mean, the police officers have a better morgue, which I'm going to fill that, be a destination. What is desire council item?
Move to approve.
I would second it, sir, this Deputy Mayor Burisma.
Motion by Councilor Hicks, second by Deputy Mayor Burisma to authorize the city manager to purchase 20 mornings for the police vehicles at a cost of $25,400, $25,542.4 cents. Is there any debate on this item? Any other debate, we got a roll call, please.
Mayor Gido?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Burisma?
Yes.
Councilor Sushi?
Yes.
Councilor Beeler?
Yes.
Councilor Hitt?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, for council's awareness, uh, Jackie's connection dropped again just now. Recording stopped and we lost her visual and your sound.
Mr. Mayor, from where I'm sitting, it looks like your microphone is muted.
Uh, Mr. Deputy Mayor, I believe she'd had people mute the Zoom application while using the council mics, but we seem to have lost the council mics.
Yeah, as I said, that I realized the truth. So, yeah, thanks for that.
Question, can you hear them?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, we can hear you as well.
Yes, we did, seven yes votes, most simple.
Okay, the motion passed. Thank you, everyone. Um, up next, we have, we have items from council members, uh, managerial committees, reports and commissions. I have not seen anything, just to be, have anything in the email queue for open positions?
Did we already appoint, um, Alan Beeler's replacement?
Don't we?
I can't remember his name. I think he sent me an email about it.
But anything will be on the list from the beginning.
Yes.
But I didn't see that email about it.
And then with, with Councilor Beeler being on, uh, council now have, um, um, LTAC opening, so, um, I'll put that on the website and everything, um, and then hopefully next season you can have somebody, you can just need somebody that's in the, that actually receives lodging tax for.
Mr. Beeler, if you know anyone that might be interested, uh, please let us, uh, fly and hopefully we'll, by the, so we'll reflect this picture, click the line. Okay, up next, we have council request, uh, for Mr. City Manager.
I can't get it on the screen through the computer crash, but, um, I'm, I'm working on my laptop now, getting that connected.
Thank you, sir.
I, okay, if I understood it correctly, I don't, I did not get any updates from any of the department heads on these items. Most of them are works in progress that are awaiting either, uh, decisions from, uh, budget or, or, uh, other processes. Um, I'll invite the department heads, if there's anything on the update list that you know that's, uh, new or different than what is already, uh, in the packet, uh, please feel free to jump in. Otherwise, um, we could move on to the next item.
Yeah, Mr. Casey, this is Shane.
Mm-hmm.
Um, the last item on the, on the report on chip sealing, um, can be removed. We, we're, we're completed. It's sealing as of last week. So if it's okay with Francisco, if we could have that removed, that's, uh, that would be good.
Yes, that'd be perfect. I didn't notice that quite a few weeks ago, chip sealed, so that's obviously something that we're, um, looking forward to this year. And, uh, sounds like we were successful in that process, so yes, I'm okay with being that removed.
Okay, thank you.
Council members, if you have anything you'd like to add to the council request, uh, for that.
I just wanted to comment, this is Councilman Julia Hart. Um, I just wanted to comment on the speed signs. If I remember correctly, they're in the budget for purchasing, and there was two who were going to be purchasing.
But you had it correct, Mr. Casey, is that?
That's correct, and I believe the order has been placed. I don't believe we've received them yet unless they're coming in this week, maybe.
I'll.
No, I don't expect to, oh, sorry.
I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Um, yeah, we don't expect to see those for another couple of weeks, uh, the, the order to come in at, at the soonest. Um, they're going to update the quote they gave me because the prices, of course, are changing like almost daily, um, with all of our, all the supplies, materials, uh, the demands right now are crazy. So they're giving me an updated, I did put an order in, but that, but that price may come down because things are starting to, to, uh, decline a little bit as far as cost. Um, but our name is, is in the hat. I mean, they're, they're, they're going to get it moving for us, but it, but we're not 100% certain when those are going to show up.
Also, I've got a question on the, uh, uh, speed sign over on Visville. I understand it may not be operating correctly. Is that something you can check on?
Yeah, those things, the, the one sign we have there, they're, they're supposed to hold a week, a seven day charge. But I think the sign, when you're going southbound, is only good for about two days. So, um, the guys have to go out every couple of days and bring it back to the shop, plug it in and charge it. Um, and that's going to be something else we'll look into, see if we can get a battery, uh, replacement for that sign. Yeah, I may have to send that in for, for maintenance. Um, we'll probably do that once we get the other signs in.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll go on to our next agenda item, which is going to be all reports, announcements and requests by council, and we'll start with Councilor Sushi.
Uh, no questions or comments this time, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, um, this section, Councilor Beeler, is more of anything you would like to bring out, any announcements or questions you might have for, uh, our city manager? Um, or any reports usually of, uh, a committee meetings you may have attended or meetings that you feel are worth doing, reporting on? Anything you'd like to add to any word?
Nothing at this time.
All right, thank you. Uh, Councilor Hicks?
No questions or comments.
Councilor Farmer?
No comments.
Councilor Hart?
Um, yes, um, we have a, a group of folks from the, uh, Yakima, uh, network of homelessness. Who are wanting to come and speak to us and, uh, talk about a, uh, program that they're working. They're looking for support from the different cities in the county, uh, for, it's a fund exchange. I think it's like a tenth, one tenth of a percent. Um, I shouldn't say that because I'm not entirely sure, but it is something to do with homelessness and trying to create some money sources for that. So I'm hoping that they're able to be at our, um, 23rd meeting if that information will be coming to you, Mayor. I just didn't want it to slip away.
Deputy Mayor Burisma?
Um, well, nothing, uh, as far as official committee meetings go, however, um, as I am away from home and I won't be home until sometime on the 16th, I hope. Um, the city manager will not be in his office any longer. Uh, Ms. Alba will be taking his place. And I just want to, uh, publicly express my gratitude to, uh, City Manager Casey. Um, you know, under your tenure, sir, our budget has improved and looks much better because you have allowed your staff to exercise their talents. And I want to thank you for that, and I want to thank you for your time of service here in Sunnyside and wish you well in the future.
Thank you very much, sir.
Here, here, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
I'd like to answer that as well. Thank you.
All right, no other reports, announcements or requests by council? We'll move on to our upcoming council meeting, Mr. City Manager.
All right, it looks like that is, uh, showing up on your screens there at City Hall. Um, the main focus is the upcoming August 23rd meeting. Um, I think based on council's discussion earlier tonight, we probably, uh, will be adding an action item related to approval of the agreement for interim city manager. Um, and I also believe that there is a, a meeting already on the calendar, um, mid-month, uh, uh, to go over with the, the city manager with Elizabeth at that time, uh, future planning for, for September. What we currently have, uh, in planning for that meeting is, um, we've, uh, based on council, uh, discussion, kind of pivoted on the approach that we're looking at for police vehicles. Uh, it's looking like it'll be more cost effective to borrow at a low interest rate and purchase vehicles rather than attempt to lease them. So you'll be getting information and potential action on that. Um, based also off of your workshop discussion around the use of the American Rescue Plan Act funds. Um, we are kind of fast tracking, uh, decision for you related to providing, uh, utility billing assistance to residents of Sunnyside who suffered economic, uh, hardship as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic and are needing, they need some assistance in getting caught up on their utility bills with the city. Um, the sewer slip lining project, uh, this is something that Public Works attempts to do, uh, each year is to get, uh, some of our underground sewer infrastructure, uh, slip lined. It's a cost effective way of upgrading the, uh, sewer lines while still in the ground, uh, without much disruptive, disruption to the surface. Um, we're also working to bring back to you an interlocal agreement, uh, related to wildfire support from the Department of Natural Resources. Um, we were having both the city attorney and the, uh, Washington City Insurance Authority review the provisions and the changes in it to make sure it was going to be acceptable to us. Both their reviews have come back and, and indicated we should be able to go forward. Um, as City Clerk mentioned, uh, need to take a look at possibly appointing someone to replace Mr. Beeler as a, uh, LTAC member. And then lastly, uh, the energy, the FSAC, the Energy Facility Site Evaluation Council. It's a state agency that is involved in the review and approval of energy projects in the state. Um, when a local jurisdiction has an energy project proposed in their jurisdiction, they're allowed to name, uh, someone from their council as a voting member of the project evaluation team. Um, in light of movement that is, uh, progressing on our solar energy project west of town. Um, it seems timely to take advantage of that opportunity and have council represented on that FSAC committee. Um, that's kind of a quick overview of what we have coming up on August 23rd or, uh, and I'm sure, uh, Director Alba will, uh, lead you through that, uh, smoothly and successfully.
Thank you, Mr. Casey, and, um, our next item is items from the department.
Um, well, I, I, I think actually I'm going to flip the script a little tonight, um, because I do have a few remarks I wanted to share with council and the community in gratitude. Um, and I'll, I'll close if, 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 uh, if permit, permitted, I'd like to close with that. Um, so I'll, uh, turn it over to the department heads to kind of report out first. Um, and let's start with, uh, Director Alba, soon to be interim, uh, city manager Alba, uh, since you're already there in the room and on camera.
Thank you very much, Mr. Casey. Um, I do want to thank you for your leadership for the last two and a half years. Um, you allow me to do my job and as a team, we built that budget that was phenomenal, like during COVID-19. Um, and I also would like to thank mayor and council for my appointment. Um, I sincerely want to do a tremendous job for you. Um, I'm hoping that I will be the right fit, this, this, I found out. So, thank you very much for your vote of confidence in me, and I really have nothing more to report.
Thank you. Uh, Director Fisher?
Yeah, I have a quick update on the middevelop project. Uh, I know council's been receiving the, the weekly briefs. I know we've, we've mentioned it a, a few times, but I'm really excited. Um, this Wednesday, uh, the contract will be back, um, on site to grind out the center turn lane. They'll grind about two inches out and, uh, get that prepared. And then they're going to be ready, we're, keep your fingers crossed, we're. We're thinking this Friday to try to pave the second lift, which is the finished lift on the Midville Road project. And then they will have to come back over the next week or two and do utility adjustments, you know, bring the manholes up to grade, valve boxes, get all the traffic striping and all the, all the lanes completely done. We're looking to be done by the end of, of this month, by the end of August. We'll be looking at about 40 workdays when we had anticipated about 80 workdays. And just to kind of speak that a little bit, we, we had anticipated that the base rock was in, in much worse condition than, than, than we had anticipated. When we actually got the asphalt removed, it's in great condition. We did the compaction testing, everything met spec. And so, they were able to turn right around, put top course down in the first layer of asphalt. So, all great news will be done under, under time and under budget. So, can't really complain about that. And then I also want to, to, to thank Martin for, for his leadership and guidance for the last two, two and a half years. Learned a ton from the guy. I wish him the best. And I will be staying in contact with you, Martin. So, good luck to you and thanks for everything.
Thank you, sir. Chief Escalera?
Uh, good evening. I just want to thank council real quick for the approval of the modems. We appreciate that. It's something that we truly need out in the cars in, in order to modernize the, the agency and modernize the equipment that the officers use in the field. Secondly, I'd like to thank Mr. Casey for all of his, his help and his leadership throughout the last couple of years with a myriad of topics that, and, and issues and concerns that have arisen over that period of time. And, and on a personal note, I, I wish you and Brian the, the very best in your new endeavors set to come. Thank you again and, and take care.
Thank you, sir. Well, I think that brings it back around to me, or, or I'm sorry. Jackie, did you have anything to update?
No, nothing.
All right, thank you. So, I, I have a couple of updates. I, I had really hoped by this point not to have to talk to you anymore about COVID-19. So, I kind of apologize in advance that unfortunately the beginning of my update tonight is, is a little bit of distressing news and information, but I do promise to close out the evening on a, on a, on a positive note. With regard to COVID-19, unfortunately, since we reopened in July, Yakima County infections, hospitalizations, and now sadly deaths are spiking to their highest levels since January. Yakima County added 696 new cases last week plus another 159 cases over this weekend. We've reached 33,736 cases total tonight. We've also jumped to 40 hospitalizations, which is roughly double where we were at a week ago. And deaths have risen to 440 as of tonight. To put that in perspective, we just recorded 10 new deaths in two weeks and it had taken nearly 10 weeks to record the last 10 deaths. Only 41.6% of county residents are fully vaccinated. Health officials are continuing to urge all persons, regardless of vaccination status, to wear face masks in public indoor settings. This afternoon, state officials announced new steps to incentivize or increase vaccination rates. The governor has issued an executive order today requiring state government employees, contractors working at state facilities, and most private healthcare workers, private sector healthcare workers, to get fully vaccinated by October 18th and show proof of vaccination or face non-disciplinary dismissal for failure to meet job requirements. Those employees will be allowed to seek exemptions only for religious or medical reasons. And today, King County, then the city of Seattle, and Kaiser Permanente have announced similar actions. We do expect further details in the coming weeks on that. I do want to provide some updates on behalf of the Fire Department. As council's aware, Fire Chief Ken Anderson remains out on medical leave and we all convey our very best wishes for his full recovery and return to work. Department staff are working hard, prioritizing continuity in field operations to ensure that the public safety needs of the city are met. We've been taking a number of steps to backfill and, and assure adequate staffing because there have been some transitions, promotions and departures over the last several months. At this point, all of the permanent positions have been filled. And we have received in the last week endorsement from the Civil Service Commission for our step to temporarily create and backfill a firefighter EMT slot for 60 days while Fire Chief Anderson continues his convalescence, which HR is hoping to be able to fill that slot here very soon. And these steps would be the Fire Department back to full staffing as we navigate this summer fire season. And then finally, I shared some of this information with staff today. I want to thank you, council members, for the privilege of serving as Sunnyside City Manager and for being able to lead a remarkable team of city employees. As I've prepared to hand over administration to Elizabeth Alba and to the rest of the leadership team, I do want to take a moment and recognize some of the progress that Sunnyside has made. As noted earlier, we ended 2019 with all funds in balance for the first time in over a decade. And we repeated that achievement again in 2020 despite the impacts of COVID-19. Sadly, the pandemic has resulted in more than 3,700 cases in Sunnyside with many lives lost or facing a future of potentially disabling conditions. The city distributed more than 55,000 face masks in 2020. We conducted public education. We partnered with the Health District to host a mass testing site. And we provided more than a quarter million dollars in direct pandemic aid to local businesses. We also earned our first clean state audit in nearly a decade. And as we stabilized finances, we secured council's approval to increase critical frontline staffing for residents by, which included two firefighters, a police officer, finance technician, three Public Works operators, a code enforcement officer, and a building inspector. We were able to earn 52% voter approval for a sales tax increase to fund our transportation benefit district. And we set ambitious six-year transportation infrastructure development plans. We worked to forge better ties with the Port of Sunnyside and our other regional economic development partners. As Director Fisher mentioned, we are nearing completion of a $2.1 million rehabilitation of Midville Road, which provides access to the vital portlight industrial zone. And we completed projects to replace a 92-year-old bridge and renovate a 65-year-old reservoir. We implemented a successful inter-local partnership for expanded ambulance services, ensured safe and peaceful First Amendment protest activities. We worked with Rotary on plans to fund and construct a new downtown skate park. We implemented new online tools for easier permitting and payment processing. Worked to set a candid and respectful tone for labor relations and negotiated six collective bargaining agreements in two years within the fiscal targets set by council. These are just some of this city's accomplishments. Is there still more work to do? Absolutely. No doubt about that. We need to continue to assure public safety and public health, to revitalize our community and civic life after this pandemic and to support opportunities for our youth to invest in a future in Sunnyside. To note just a few, but meeting the challenges of responding to the needs of a changing, diverse community is what this city does every day. Bill Lang of Rotary recently encouraged me to come back and visit next summer for Ale Fest. And I really hope to be able to make that trip. I'll look forward to seeing a fantastic new skate park, some beautiful new homes and apartments being built, and perhaps even a lively farmer's market and food truck court at Centennial Square. I'll know that residents and visitors to Sunnyside alike enjoy high-quality police and fire protection, safe drinking water, an award-winning wastewater system, well-maintained parks and streets, and the support of many dedicated public officials and employees here. Thank you, and I wish you all the best in the future.
Thank you, Mr. Casey. With all those apologies and surprises given us, we have so much good stuff for you. We do wish you well. Obviously, I tell you guys, make them plan and I wish you well whatever, you know, comes in the future. So, it's really great to end in a good note with the City Manager. I know we've had our shares of different controversies in the past and it's absolutely good to end in a good note and to have that, knowing that we did what we could to help you stay and that in the day, you know, the city is there for your service to the citizens here.
Thank you.
Council members, any last minute comments or questions?
Just want to thank, thank the manager for his service, Mr. Mayor. Thank you so much, Martin. Please stay in touch.
Will do, sir. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, everyone. So, there being no further visits of coming for council, I will not object. End this meeting and send it to the sign here. Thank you, everyone, and have a good evening.
Good night, everyone.
Good night, all. Thank you.